...real positive impact in the community, community larger than Newt, so I think we're in good hands now, though, so thank you.
Mark, could you come up here? As Mark had indicated earlier, one of our officers here who is retired from Burnham, he's a special with us, is Steve Moran, and he put together a book of these shadow boxes, head auto of Mike and Mark, and just wanted to display them tonight while I just say a few words on behalf of each of our retirees. Tonight, I would like to honor two individuals who both have over thirty years of service with the town of Newton, Michael Richards and Mark Zappa. As our agency begins an unprecedented internal transition, we would like to publicly thank each of these retired officers for the examples that they have set, the time that they've invested, and the contributions that they've made to the Newton community. First, I want to acknowledge Mike Richards dedication to the Newton Police Department, the Town of Newton, and the County of Sussex. Mike has always tried to make a difference in our department and within our community, from managing significant investigations, to providing valuable supervision, to making improvements in our technology, training, and equipment. He has demonstrated persistent leadership as the town's tenth police chief. Mike's brand of leadership had clear expectations. He always demanded accountability, set high standards of performance, and focused our resources most efficiently and effectively. Chief Richards was also a catalyst in spearheading new community outreach programs such as the CLEAR program, and his impact in this regard has been far-reaching. It is my belief that helping to implement and promote the Community Law Enforcement Addiction Recovery Program will be Mike's legacy. This program continues to benefit those individuals who are struggling with drug addiction in order to make a positive difference in the quality of life for individuals, families, and our entire community. Additionally, I would like to publicly express my gratitude to him for hiring quality people under his tenure. Though it may have been the consensus within the administration regarding these appointments, ultimately, it was still his call. As new chief, I consider myself fortunate to have such high-caliber individuals on our department, both capable and experienced, which will enable it to be one of the finest in the county. Lastly, I would like to personally thank you for your friendship through the years. From when we started as dispatchers together, to bike patrol officers, to roommates, to detectives, to being part of your administration for the last fourteen years, we have collectively navigated through some difficult times and tried to do what is best for the officers we led and the citizens we served. I appreciate all your efforts that you have made on behalf of our department throughout your career. I wish you all the best in your present endeavor and in the future. Thank you. You're welcome. Next is Mark Zappa. Mark Zappa is deserving of recognition tonight after having served as a part-time dispatcher in 1983, when he was hired, a special officer in 1986, and upon being hired as a full-time patrol officer in 1989 for the Newton Police Department. A law enforcement career that cumulatively spanned over thirty-seven years. I'm not going to last that much. During that time, Mark served in numerous capacities within our agency and has provided the dealership in these roles. From senior patrol officer, to patrol sergeant, to support services lieutenant, Mark has always been a valuable resource for the members of our agency while providing them with guidance, mentoring, and, most importantly, friendship. Not one to seek attention or welcome notoriety, he often worked behind the scenes, continually overseeing his duties and responsibilities without hesitation or objection. Mark's impact on the Newton Police Department ranged across several fronts. Despite being responsible for many systems and network operations, he always made time for everyone and would try to assist them in any way possible. During his career, he wore many hats that didn't display a badge, whether it was as a problem solver, a troubleshooter, a multi-passer. He handled stressful situations effectively with a calm demeanor and a sense of humor. He was responsible for many things that involved a lot of moving parts, yet he always managed to work towards a solution while developing relationships with mechanic, mechanics, vendors, and service technicians alike. Many times, he was the voice of reason that either supported your decision or offered another perspective for consideration. All of these attributes, coupled with his acquired knowledge, led him to help maintain the cohesiveness of our department. So tonight, I would like to personally thank Mark Zappa for his continued cooperation to his coworkers, his constant commitment to our agency, and his valued friendship over the years, none of which, I assure you, is taken for granted. For we, too, have dealt with a lot of issues, overcame obstacles, and worked together for the betterment of this department for over thirty years. I wish you the best in retirement and in the years to come.
Seek. I'll read Stephen's bio into the record. Stephen Seek is a lifelong resident of Sussex County. He graduated Walk Hill Valley Regional High School in 2013. He attended Stockton University, where he graduated in 2017 with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Steve started his law enforcement career in the Sussex County Jail in 2018 and then transferred to the Sussex County Sheriff's Office in 2019. While part of the sheriff's office, he attended the Morris County Public Safety Training Academy and was a graduate of the Ninety-Third Basic Police Class. He is very eager and appreciative to be given the opportunity to serve the town and residents of Newton.
Please raise your right hand. I.
Aye.
You mean?
This is Stephen Seek.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Police patrolman.
Police patrolman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
First off, I want to keep you going to notice, we knew this was the right date to swear him in because today has special significance, it's Steve's birthday. And we'll never forget the day that he was hired. Stephen M. Seek comes to the Newton Police Department from the Sussex County Sheriff's Department after having graduated from the Morris County Police Academy in the fall of 2019. He was highly recommended by the Sheriff's Department and described as being an asset to their agency. An extensive background investigation was conducted by detectives, which resulted in Steve being identified as a consistent performer, who was goal-oriented and strongly supported by his family and his friends in the pursuit of becoming a police officer. This was evident due to his desire to do everything the right way and to the best of his ability. I conducted my own inquiry with friends and acquaintances who knew Steve, and many described him as a top-notch person and a type of high-character individual that law enforcement agencies should be looking to hire. One recommendation even indicated that they knew his parents for quite some time and that it was not by coincidence or by chance that Steve is the person he is today because he is a product of his upbringing. It has become apparent to me that Steve possesses the proper morals and values that were instilled from him, instilled in him from a young age, and that he was raised with integrity and a strong work ethic. It is for these reasons that the Newton Police Department chose to hire Steve Seek as our next officer, and it is my belief that he will continue to represent our department with pride, professionalism, compassion, and eagerness to learn. Welcome aboard.
Sounds like it.
At this point, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We have Jason Schaefer joining us at 7:37.
And I was in such a hurry to have the minutes done, I forgot to read the open public meetings. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January At this point in the meeting, the Town Council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone, and please limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. If anyone in the public would like to make any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address. With no one coming forward, I close that portion of the meeting, and we move on to council and manager reports. First, I'd like to start off, even though they have left, thanking both Mike Richards and Mark Zappa for all of their service to this community over all the years that they were here. And I want to also thank all the policemen that we presently have who service this community. They are a fine group of men who go over and above the sound of duty for themselves, and I thank them deeply for what they do. On February 12th, 2020, I attended a meeting with Cheryl Klaus, the Deputy District Director, from Congressman Josh Gottheimer's office, as well as Lauren Gennola, his Director of Return on Investment. Also at the meeting were representatives from the town, Jessica Caldwell, the Town Planner, Chief Verkan, and Chief Miller. We discussed the needs of the firemen and the various grants available which can meet those needs. On February 21st, 2020, I met with representatives from Special, Data, Logic, as well as Adam Vog and Rick Strawaway from our DPW. The reps from SDL explained the software and how it includes functionality for not only the DPW department, but also the many municipal departments. This is all I have for this meeting. Moving on, Dan?
Nothing for me at this time.
Councilman Dixon?
I'm just going to echo that. Congratulations to Lieutenant Zappa and Chief Richards on their retirements. I want to thank them for their decades of service and dedication to the Town of Newton. Their contributions over the years leave a lasting impact. Just a couple of things from the Board of Ed meeting. The Walk Hill River Watershed, through a grant, wants to do a porous pavement project at Halsted in the back parking lot where they've been having some drainage issues. Dr. Green spoke to the emphasis that the New Jersey Department of Education is placing on this year's census and trying to get everyone to participate, and the 2020 preliminary budget will be presented at the March 10th meeting. That's all I have.
Jason, do you have anything to say?
Nothing for me at this time.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you and recognize the Fire Department for the work that they're doing on the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I know they've been doing, and the committee, they've been doing a lot of promotion on the event, organizing the event. I know Mayor Diglio and Kimberly have all been part of those conversations, and I'm looking forward to a good event, invite everybody out for that, more to come on that. Just want to make notice and mention that the Town of Newton is currently looking for Recreation Aides and Lifeguards for the Newton Pool this summer, so we have all of those positions that we're actively recruiting for, so if you know high school and college students that are going to be home for the summer and are looking for a great place to work and some time in the sun, please help us spread the news on that. I also want to recognize the work and the progress, really, over the last two weeks of Thor Labs around their redevelopment projects. The former Nova Phase, the former Newton Pizza location have all been coming down. It seems very quick, almost like I leave town in the morning and there's a part of a building, and I come back at night and the building's gone, so I know that they are anxious, the finishing touches on the new parking lot, everything looks nice, and thank them for the work that they continue to do and the investment they continue to make. And then I want to echo the sentiments, even though our officers have left for the evening, but over the last number of weeks, and really since the end of last year, there's been a lot of work and movement in the police department. Tom and his team have been working with the leadership in the police department to really make some of these changes seamless and to make the, I think, correct and proper and right appointments. But for those of you that have been attending the meetings the last couple of sessions, I hope you'll agree that the recognition and the accolades are more than deserved for the police officers that have received those accolades. You know, thirty-seven, thirty-plus years with any employer, much less a position where you're putting your life on the line every day, is more than commendable, and, you know, I continue to say that I think that the Newton Police Department has one of the best police departments in the county, if not the state of New Jersey, not just because of work they do in day, day in and day out, serving the Newton residents, but the county as a whole, us being the county seat. But the community policing, the work that's been done around CLEAR, coffee with a cop, this work that they do in the schools, the grants that they receive through the police work that's done, the investigative work in the detective bureau, everyone that's in dispatch, all the support staff, it really is a top-notch organization, one that we're proud of every single day, so just a couple of accolades. Tom, if you'll pass on to the members of the police department, that would be great, and that's all I have.
Tom?
Just that you have received a formal request from the Fire Department St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee for a formal motion to be presented today, that March 21st, 2020, at 11:00 a.m. would be the first annual Newton St. Patrick's Day Parade, so if you could just do a formal motion, so that could be in the record, I appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to formalize the Newton, first annual Newton St. Patrick's Day Parade, sponsored and hosted by the Newton Fire Department.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman LaFleur and a second by Councilman Dixon to formalize the parade for this year and for the future. Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFleur?
Yes.
Mayor Diglio?
Yes. We have three ordinances for introduction. Ordinance 2023, an ordinance granting municipal consent to the issuance of a franchise to Service Electric Cable TV of New Jersey Incorporated to construct, own, operate, extend, and maintain a cable television system in the Town of Newton, New Jersey, County of Sussex, setting forth conditions accompanying the grant of said municipal consent and providing for the regulation and use of said system and revising Chapter A 326, cable franchise of the Town of Newton Code.
Mayor, before I offer the ordinance, Mr. Russo, I have a question. If, does everything that's outlined in the ordinance transfer with whoever may be?
Owns.
Whoever owns Service Electric?
That would be a question for council.
Looking at the assignment portion, but my understanding is yes, that they bought the rights of whatever SEC has the rights under the license with.
Right, so it's just been announced that Altis has purchased Service Electric, so I know that that's a little while from being completed.
Completed, yeah.
So for now, we're making this agreement with Service Electric, and I was looking in the way that the ordinance was written, and it wasn't clear to me, but of course I defer to you, just want to make sure that everything that's here gets assigned to and is transferred to Altis.
So we don't have anything that I see exactly on point, but so typically it's in their documents, whatever Altis with SEC will assume all the contracts that they have, so that'll be within that paperwork we won't see, most likely, but I'll follow up to make sure.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll offer ordinance 2020-3.
I'll second that.
I have a motion for ordinance 2020-3 by Councilwoman LaFleur and a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFleur?
Yes.
Mayor Diglio?
Yes. The next is ordinance 2020-4, an ordinance to exceed the 2020 municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank under New Jersey NJSA 40A:4-45, period 14. Do I have a motion to introduce this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2020-4.
A second motion?
Okay. I have a motion to introduce ordinance 2020-4 by Councilman Dixon and a second by Councilman Schlafer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFleur?
Yes.
Mayor Diglio?
Yes. Finally, I have ordinance 2020-5 for introduction, an ordinance vacating a portion of Spring Street in the Town of Newton.
I'll offer ordinance 2020-5.
Second.
Before I continue, my only concern is with the portion of that, is that going to interfere with the easement that we have on that property for the parades?
No.
No, okay. I have an, I have a motion to introduce ordinance 2020-5 by Councilwoman LaFleur and a second by Councilman Dixon. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFleur?
Yes.
Mayor Diglio?
Yes. There is no "oh" business, so we'll continue with the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Town Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Tom, will you please review the resolutions?
Sure. Resolution 69 cancels our reserve balance of the water sewer fund. Resolution 70 uses a three-year average for the rut. Resolution 71 eliminates pool season pass membership and daily admission fees for Town of Newton residents only for this pool season. Resolution 72 authorizes a refund of taxes for Nine Washington Street. 73 authorizes two change orders as per the town engineer and architect for Firehouse Two. Resolution 74 is authorizing compensation adjustments for non-union employees or employees not covered by collective bargaining. Resolution 75 is a temporary deed of easement for Seventy-seven and a Half Washington Street. Tonnage Grant Application is 76. School Crossing Guard Appointment is 77. Ms. Franklin to the Newton Housing Authority, and Bills and Vouchers is 71.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I want to take off Resolution 73 for brief discussion.
And Mayor, not to remove, but I just want to mention that Resolution 71, the elimination of the pool season pass membership and daily admission fees for the Town of Newton residents only for 2020, for the pool season in 2020. So again, this is just a culmination of years-plus work in, I think, what amounted to a great resolution for the pool and the overall business of the town. You know, as we know, right now, we're in the process of doing what we need to do to get the pool open. We know that we missed a season, and I still stand behind the fact that that was the right business decision to make for the safety of the pool structure and also to really run our business most efficiently. But Tom, you know, I think this is great work, too. I think the idea came out of many discussions among council, but really executed by you and your office to kind of work through, as we did through the budget process, to, you know, really provide this benefit for the residents of Newton, our seniors, our students, everyone that uses the pool. And I think when we did a cost-benefit analysis of looking at eliminating all of the costs for this year, it really amounted to something that we could do for the residents as a thank you for their patience over the last year of not having the pool open last season and also standing by decisions that were made. So I just want to highlight that one. I also want to highlight Resolution 78-2020, which is appointment of Joyce Franklin to the Newton Housing Authority. I know many members of the Newton Housing Authority and leadership of the Newton Housing Authority are here tonight in support of that appointment. We had a very nice conversation with Ms. Franklin prior to tonight's council meeting. I think she's going to be a wonderful and welcome addition to the Newton Housing Authority as a resident of Liberty Towers, as the, and I have to look back at my notes because there's so many, but as the president of the Primetime Seniors Association, treasurer of Lafayette Seniors, being involved with the Liberty Towers Association, all of the, I think, events and things that you've brought over to Liberty Towers over the last couple of years, and the work that you really do to really benefit your neighbors, I think are all going to be great skills and great successes that you're going to bring to the Newton Housing Authority. You know, we often say that the work that's done behind the scenes on behalf of the town is often done through volunteers and, of course, the staff here, so thank you for your interest in the Newton Housing Authority, and thank you to all of you for the good work. The council has heard lots of great comments over the last several months about what's being done over there and the maintenance and the continued improvements that are happening over there, so good news is good news, right? And just wanted to recognize you all here tonight and thank you for your service. With that, you have Resolution 73 pulled, so I will offer the consent agenda minus Resolution 73-2020.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the consent agenda minus Resolution 73 by Councilwoman LaFleur and a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFleur?
Yes.
Mayor Diglio?
Yes.
Okay, my purpose for pulling 73 was, before authorizing the change order, last time I was there, the exhaust system that became obsolete, from my understanding, I don't know obsolete to the trucks or obsolete to the building, but it was hung, and then it had to be taken down, and the hole in the ceiling was going to be plugged. Has that actually occurred, the taking down of all the racking and the, because they started to put the system up, and then we know, then the problem arose that the old system couldn't be used, so then the change order was authorized, or actually requested, I should say, negotiated. So then the change order was authorized, or actually requested, I should say, negotiated. But I just want to make sure that the work has been done.
So you want to know if the bracing bars and the other things are still there or removed? I will ask.
I don't think we should authorize it until that's been done.
Well, I don't know if you read the memo, but.
I did.
Okay, so it's your call if you want to deny the.
I don't want to deny it, I want to.
But I think it should be approved. The concrete sidewalk was authorized by the engineer and the other change order was authorized by Tom Costin and I, but.
No, I agree with authorizing those change orders. What I'm saying is that I don't want, I don't want to get into a situation where the contractor completely leaves the site and then we have to get this racking down, because I was just there like two weeks ago and it was still up.
Okay, I will ask.
Can we withhold payment until that's rectified?
That's up to the council.
So our options are that we can approve it with, but withholding payment until that is, do we discover that?
We can approve it and withhold payment of change order number 14 at $4,733.28. We could just authorize it at the next meeting if it's been done.
Is that how we wish to proceed?
The work that was done, but the change order, the work was authorized and the work has been done. So if you want to withhold payment, that's your prerogative, but the work that is indicated in both of the change orders is performed.
Oh, so it has nothing to do with what Deputy Mayor Flynn is questioning?
Well, it does because there was a description by Tom Costin about how there was a discrepancy in the technology. The work was done, it was hung, okay? It was hung, it was, they tried to use it, it didn't work. The current ventilation system vents the trucks appropriately through the top vent of the, there's a power vent on the top of the building. But this exhaust system hangs off to the left side if you're looking at the bay doors. So if that hasn't been taken down, it should be completely taken down because that's part of the work.
But is that work outlined in this change order? That's what I'm.
Yeah, but Tom says that a future system could be installed in the bay, so.
With the modifications made architecturally, the thing doesn't have to be there.
But there might be certain pieces of bracket or equipment that might stay in place in case they decided to add some sort of system in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I have no, the fact that there was a discrepancy, the Fire Department wanted to use the old equipment, but it didn't work, so it got hung because it needed to because it was requested by someone. I understand that, it's just that the contractor deserves to be paid for it. But what I'm, what I'm saying is that the material that's there that the Fire Department doesn't want should be taken down since it truly was, they actually never activated the system in the change order.
Wait, is this saying that though?
It's not saying it's removed.
No, it's actually saying that it's going to stay up there in case they want to use it in the future.
Yeah, page two of Tom's memo.
Right here.
Well, my discussion with Jason was that it was coming down.
Jason's not the architect.
Yeah, but I put a little bit more faith in someone's opinion that's been there on a, that goes there on a regular basis and not the architect. Look, I'm just saying if the work's been done and it's, and the Fire Department's satisfied with what's going to be left there, then this can be approved at the next meeting.
Sounds like maybe it's two separate things. It sounds like if you're okay with the payment, then we would adopt this resolution and then you'd ask for follow-up regarding the removal of the brace, because this resolution just deals with the payment of the two, change orders 14 and 22.
I don't want to get charged again to take something down that really was a little bit of a mistake of multiple parties involved when taking it down doesn't seem like significant undertaking and could potentially be done under the original contract or at least the original change order.
So I think that's a question, I mean, there's got to be some confirmation that that's supposed to be coming down or should come down, because the architect's saying that it should stay there for potential future use, but you're saying that.
There's no reason to rush payment for insignificant change orders to a $2 million project when it's $4,000 or $5,000 if it's going to cause us to be like, oh, that should have been done while the contractor was still mobilized on the job or at least still contractually obligated to finish something for the town.
Is there any other discussion on this? Should we proceed with the vote?
I think it should be held to the next meeting.
What happened to vote on that?
Wait, which portion, just this portion? Change order 14. Is that what we're saying?
No, if you're going to table it, you table the whole resolution.
Table the whole resolution. Is it going to cause a problem, Tom? Tom, I mean.
No, it's just I wish I had known this before the meeting.
It's okay, we're having a discussion.
Just table it for the next meeting.
It's two weeks.
Do we need to take a motion and a vote?
A motion and a vote and a table.
All right, I will need a motion.
I'll make a motion to table Resolution 73.
I'll second that motion.
There it is. I have a motion to table Resolution 73 till the next meeting by Deputy Mayor Flynn and a second by Councilman Schlafer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFleur?
Yes.
Mayor Diglio?
Yes.
Is there any other discussion at this point in time on any other topic of the council?
Could I just bring up one thing briefly? All right. I know at the budget meetings, we discussed, we had the question about the United Telephone and Scott, our tax assessor, answered it very clearly. But I was, I was looking around and in it, he said about legislation fixes or legal fixes. So there is Senate and companion bill in the Assembly that I just wanted to see if anybody wanted to, you know, possibly throw our weight behind and, you know.
What, just to fill me in a little bit more on what?
The United Telephone.
The telephone tax exempt.
The tax exempt, that once it was below 51%, they were able to withhold and come off the tax rolls.
And the property is located where?
Well, it's the whole, it's like the whole, the whole telephone system, like the landline system. So, so this legislation is there to try to revert that back to, so that the municipality would still get the money instead of it being tax exempt.
This is money on telephone poles, right?
Yeah, the telephone, telephone line infrastructure.
I think I'd like to hear Scott's opinion or Ursula's opinion on, or at least take a look at that legislation, maybe a little more.
I can look at it, I have the extension memo.
Yeah, it's S. 421, whatever companion it is. That's all, just something to look into.
At this point in time, I'll open the meeting to the public again. If anyone has any comments, please state your name and address. No one coming forward, I will close that portion of the meeting. Are there any other council and manager comments?
Included in our packet was a, what is this? Backup attorney for Mr. McBreyer, tax appeal attorney, is that just information for us?
With an open request received.
Any other comments? We do not have an exec, did you want to say something?
Oh, no.
Okay, we don't, do not have an executive session, so at this point in time, I will entertain a motion for an adjournment.
Motion 803 to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn at 8:03 by Councilwoman LaFleur and a second by Councilman Dixon. All in favor?
Aye.